I'd like to call to order the Citizens Advisory Committee, City of Lowell, for the regular meeting on Monday, November 12th, 2018. Could we please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, and where I am, indivisible, with the living justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like a motion for the approval of the agenda.
Can we move the -- I'd like to make a motion to move the new business in front of the old business before that.
And support for that motion?
Support.
Okay. And do we have a support for the approval of the agenda as amended? Please say aye.
Aye.
And a poll the same time? So we're moving all of the old -- or all of the new business above the old business. Next, can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting, October 8th?
Aye.
And second?
Second.
And discussion? All in favor of accepting the minutes as written? Please say aye.
Aye.
Minutes stand accepted. With the exception of anything that's already on the agenda, is there any public comment at this point? And you will have the opportunity to comment after or during each one of the items. So just, this is a, just a general. Okay, thank you.
Bruce?
Yes.
Shouldn't we hear roll call?
Oh, I'm sorry. Roll call. Amy, can you give us a roll call?
Kelly Braemeyer.
She's absent.
Marty Chambers.
Here.
Colin Plank.
Here.
Chair Marker.
Here.
Dave Cutharwalter.
Here.
Sorry. Tony Ellis.
Here.
Amanda Shroppin.
Here.
And I'd like to make a motion that we accept Kelly as being absent.
I'll support.
Thank you.
Pardon?
Oh, do I need a vote? Okay. All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Kelly is excused. Thank you, Marty, for inviting me. So the first, first public business is a public hearing, which I'd like to open, and it is on the Burger King Special Land Use and Site Plan Review, 1400 West Main Street. Do we have a representative from Burger King here?
Yes.
If you would, I would like to invite you to come on up, and in five minutes, you don't have to tell us your whole plan, but just kind of tell us basically what you're looking for and what you want to do.
All right, thank you.
Here.
My name's Rick Rolfing. I'm an engineer with BFA. I'm out of Washington, Missouri. It's about 45 miles west of St. Louis, and Burger King is my client on this project to redevelop a piece of ground that is at the southeast quadrant of West Main and Valley Vista Drive, also directly across the street from Rite Aid, north of Curtis Cleaners, west of the McDonald's on Main Street, to pinpoint where it's at. With the proposed Burger King, the use requires a special use permit for approval along with the site plan with the drive-through facility. Andy here with Williams Works has put together a staff, a staff report. Within that staff report, there are a few comments that he brings up, and I've just got some, try to address some of those here.
We'll, we'll do that as we're, as we're going through it.
Oh, okay.
Instead of specifically.
Sure.
I'm just looking for a general.
Okay.
Yep, exactly.
So the entrances, it's a vacant lot today. The size of Burger King is about 3100 square feet. We will be keeping the entrance at the same location off of Main Street. More on that later. Same location of entrance essentially off of Valley Vista. Our development is kind of in conjunction with the Curtis Cleaners. I've recently approved, I believe, site plan with them. We will be coming back to the city for a subdivision plat to create our own, at which time we will be creating access easements and parking easements and things like that. But it's essentially a redevelopment. No major infrastructure improvements as far as utilities go. Your fire chief has approved the site plan. Director Public Works had one comment on the type of water line we're putting out there. So it's pretty straightforward. Impervious-wise, going back to the previous development, we'll actually have more grass, if we, if you will, impervious area than paved, than was there.
Thank you, Rick. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Andy, would you please read us through your memorandum so that we can follow up?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
So as Rick said, this is located right, so Curtis Cleaner's kind of set back quite a ways off the street. There's a big empty lot right in front of the corner of Valley Vista, Main Street. That's where this is, is proposed to go. It's 3100 square foot building and associated improvement. He's not proposing any, any new driveways, so that right now there's an existing driveway on Main Street and an existing driveway on Valley Vista. They are proposing to utilize the same driveways to access the site, and we'll get into the driveway thing in minutes. There are a couple things we'll need to talk about. Just on, on a quick overview of the site, so when we do a site plan review, we just kind of walk through dimensional requirements, lighting, landscaping, all that kind of stuff. So let's kind of hit those one at a time before we get into the specific review standards for site plans. There are going to be a lot of standards here because we have to look at the site plan review standards, plus the special land use review standards, plus the specific review standards that pertain only to direct-to restaurants. So site lighting, they did submit a photometric plan. The zoning ordinance states that not more than 0.5 foot panels of light shall be cast onto adjoining properties. The plan shows that lighting would exceed those levels along the southern property line, which is right adjacent to Curtis Cleaners, and then along the west side of the property, which is Valley Vista Drive. You know, the ordinance doesn't, doesn't say, a lot of times the, the ordinance will say that it can't do that when there's a residential property nearby. It doesn't say that. It just says property. So they might have to make some revisions to their photometric plan and site lighting to make sure that they're, they're keeping all the light on site and it's not spilling out onto adjacent properties. As far as parking is concerned, they propose 45 spaces, which is more than what the zoning ordinance requires, why about 14? A lot that contains more than a dozen spaces is required to have islands or, or little peninsula or something built within, within the parking lot at a rate of one island per 20 spaces. If you recall, when we did that a few months ago, looking at the parking chapter, they've done all that. They've met those. The other thing to talk about with regard to parking is that there's also on this property, and I don't know that you will, you were here at the time, this was maybe a year or two ago, Curtis Cleaners came in for their expansion. There's an easement on the Burger King property that provides parking to Curtis Cleaners. So their, the easement language states that the Northland property, which is the Burger King property, must provide 19 spaces for Curtis Cleaner's use. So in conjunction with what we've told this, we approved a parking lot expansion at Curtis Cleaners maybe a month ago on the south side of, of, of their building. So what looks like is going to happen is that Curtis Cleaner's lot will be completed, and then, and then, and then the need for that specific easement and that specific number of parking spaces will be eliminated because he'll be able to have all of those on his, his own property now. At the same time, just looking at the site, if you, you guys probably noticed this on the site plan, so if you pull in, if you were to pull into this, to the site off of Valley Vista to access the Burger King or to go to Curtis Cleaners, there are some parking spaces on the south side of the Burger King property that are on the Burger King property, but virtually guaranteed that some of the Curtis Cleaner's customers are going to be using them, just by the way that it's designed, and that's fine. But I, I do think that there needs to be some kind of a, you know, cross-access easement or maybe they modify the existing agreement somehow, I don't know, to, to kind of allow for that to work. So there's some kind of shared use for those spaces. I don't know that Burger King is going to need 45 spots. I don't know that the spots on the south side of that property are going to be used very frequently by Burger King customers, but that's what's proposed. With regard to landscaping, Andy, one, one real quick question.
Who draws up that easement question?
We would run that by the city attorney. So we can.
We would put that in conditions.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. With regard to landscaping, the zoning ordinance requires one tree and three shrubs for each 30 foot, 30 feet of lot width. That's in addition to parking lot landscaping. The site's got 200 feet front of Main and about 200 feet on Valley Vista, so that equates to about 13 trees and 40 shrubs. They propose eight trees and 27 shrubs along Main Street, 27 evergreen trees along Valley Vista, then four additional trees located throughout the property, primarily on the southern and eastern sides of the building. Plus, there's a few shrubs scattered, found here and there around the drive-through area, and there are two existing trees that are located within the Main Street right in place. So that's on MDOT property, not the Applebee's property. So the MDOT trees on Main Street, it appears, would remain. Given all that, I think our, our view is that, is that they meet the standards of, in the zoning ordinance for landscaping, so we don't have any significant concerns there. Signage, which is addressed as a condition of approval, so there's, according to the site plan, there would be a pylon sign, so like a pole sign out front. We allow those to be up to 20 feet tall. They did submit details with that, but that would be addressed as a condition of approval if you were to approve it. On the building itself, there's the circular Burger King logo that looks like they have an area of 36 square feet, which is fine, except that the sign that faces Main Street, it has that circular logo, and there's also additional text that says flame grilling since 1964, which is an additional 34 square feet, which puts them over the 50-foot maximum. So in, in, in my view, the, the side facing Main Street, they're going to have to reduce either the area or take one of them off or modify the signage somehow, because our maximum for wall signs is 50 square feet, and they're over that by a little bit right now on Main As far as the dimensional requirements, so I kind of skipped over that. They do meet setbacks, building height, lot area, lot width, all that kind of stuff. All those standards are satisfied. We don't have some new changes there. Are there questions, Mr. Chairman or other commissioners, before we get into the, these special land use review standards? And also, the, later on, we have the, the site plan, site plan standards that we'll look at for a site plan review.
Okay. One of the questions, it's not really a question so much, is on the signage here, obviously there is an issue here. You'll point that out as, as we move along the board conditions.
Yes.
Specific.
Yep.
Preparations and things of that nature, correct?
Yes. So a sign, when they, like for the pylon sign out front, they have to submit a application specifically for a sign. They'll have to give us more detail when they're at that time. So if the, so the size of the sign is too big, we'll say, you know, you gotta make it smaller, and then we'll work through that process with administrative.
And in relationship to the parking lots, do, do they need a island?
They need, oh, does that mean island, you know, usually either in the corners of parking lots or in the middle along the side, you have this kind of like peninsula.
Right.
It has a tree in it, and they've got some of those.
So we're okay there?
Yep.
Okay. Commissioners, any, any questions at all at this point?
With the special land use review standards, so we do this a lot for site plans, and we've been through this several times. Special land use is, it's, it's a similar thing. The planning commission must find that each of these standards has been satisfied prior to approving a site plan. So, Mr. Chairman, you just kind of want to walk through these one at a time and have everyone go on down that?
Yes. Let's do that.
Okay. So the first standard reads that the proposed special land use shall be designed, constructed, operated, and maintained so as to be harmonious and appropriate in appearance with the existing or intended character of the general vicinity, and that such use will not change the essential character of the area in which it is proposed. My thoughts on that real quick are that I, I think it does satisfy that standard. It's similar to other structures in the vicinity. This is right next to McDonald's, which is obviously very similar land use, and this property is completely vacant right now. So you're taking an empty, empty lot and improving it with a viable commercial business, so.
Commissioners, do you want to vote on these individually, or do you want to go through all five of them and then come back and vote on, on each one individually? How would you like to do this? I would, I would prefer that we do it one by one and just take the vote and be done.
Get it done that way.
Yeah. And I'm, I'm just going to do this, all in favor of, of saying that the standard is met for number one, under special land use review standards. Please say aye.
Aye.
And a poll the same time? So six to, six to zero.
And we, we will also be taking public comment on this item.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, so is that, is that after we do all this?
I'd like to go through all five standards. I think take their votes, and then we'll do public, public comments and come back to it. And we can always re-vote on them.
Okay. Item number two is that the proposed special land use shall be generally consistent with the City of Lowell master plan. The ma, master plan was adopted in 2007. It was reviewed a few months ago, actually.
Right.
Not changed, though. So it identifies this part of town as kind of a, in general, contemporary suburban strip commercial area. States that land uses in this area should include retail office and service uses, generally oriented towards automobile traffic. Yeah, the future land stamp actually shows this as a, as a, as a, one of the plan's mixed use areas. So it talks about not necessarily in downtown-style mixed use, like we have over on the, on the east side of downtown, but, you know, again, it's, it's looking at local businesses and then a variety of land uses. So it could be commercial service, it could be retail, it could be offices, so just a, a variety of thing. It does talk about encouraging some pedestrian connectivity, and while the setbacks don't lend themselves that well to pedestrian activity, they have proposed to maintain or improve the sidewalk both on, on Main Street and on, on Valley Vista. And then, for the last several site plans that we've done, the commission has asked for that connection from the sidewalk into the front door of the building and striking across the parking lot. All that has been shown on the site.
Thank you. And again, I'll, I'll ask that, all in favor of approving the second land use standard? Please say aye.
Aye.
And a poll the same time?
The third standard states that the proposed special land use shall be served adequately by essential public facilities and services such as highway streets, police, fire protection, drainage structures, refuse disposal, water and sewage facilities. You know, again, I think, given where it is, which is, you know, right on, on, on Main Street, and it's, it's pretty open on all sides, you can drive around with the drive-through to any side of the building that you want. It appears to be very accessible. Because this was a previously developed lot, it was already pretty much entirely impervious, so as Rick said, they're actually increasing the amount of pervious surface on the site. So there's, there's less pavement, or there will be less impervious surface than, than there was before. So the site plan also shows some water and sewer connections, which did need to be revised, and the applicant worked with the City Department of Public Works on getting those things straightened out, as I understand it. That's also been addressed as a condition of approval. So there will likely be some change, some changes from the site plan shown, that was submitted versus reality because of the 50 proposed connections were shown. But otherwise, you know, contention, of course, on fire department and approval from all the other city offices. Our view is that that standard was unsatisfactory.
Commissioners, again, I'll suggest that we, okay, the third review standard as, as proposed. All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
And a poll the same time?
The fourth standard states that the proposed special land use shall not create excessive additional requirements at public cost for public facilities and services. Again, we don't, we don't see anything there. These, there's not anything about this use that makes me think it would require a significant amount of additional public investment. Yes, that's connecting to public water, public sewer. Yes, there are some additional, you know, potential, I guess, fire protection costs, but those exist with everything else in the city. Whenever something is built, there's, you know, a moderate potential increase in, in those things, but the language of the ordinance states it would be excessive, and I don't think that's the case.
Again, on the fourth standard, I would propose that we accept it as written or as stated. Please, everybody in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And a poll the same time? I think we actually have six to zero.
Yeah, we do. It looks like you just lost one of my numbers here. So the fifth one, which is unnumbered on your, on the report, says that the proposed special land use shall not involve uses, activities, processes, materials, and equipment or conditions of operation that will be detrimental to any person's property or the general welfare by reason of excessive production of noise, traffic, smoke, fumes, clear or odors. Again, we don't, we don't see that. Burger King is a fairly large traffic generator, as is all the past few places, and we'll talk about that more in a little bit. You know, but again, given its, its, its location on Main Street, it's got access to, to public streets with driveways on, on both, other, other possible concerns I don't think are unusual compared to anything else that would be permitted in the commission district, so the restaurants and service uses and so forth.
And again, with the fifth standard, with the exception of the over-billed burger occasional, I would propose that we accept it as, as proposed. All in favor? Please say aye.
I have a question. Is this where, I've been trying to look for the trash or sanitary dumpster or, because it's in front of Curtis Cleaners and.
It's on the side?
Is it on the side? Yeah.
It's, it's on the side along Valley Vista on the easy west side of the building.
See it?
It's still hard to see on the site plan, but it's there.
Okay. Okay.
Any other questions? All in favor, then, please say aye.
Aye.
And a poll the same time? Number six?
The proposed special land use shall comply with applicable federal state and local requirements, and copies of all applicable prints shall be permitted to the city. This is something that would be addressed as a condition of approval at this point. They will need, for example, permits from the city for water and sewer, low light power. They will need an MDOT permit for the driveway, and there's going to be some, I think they're going to have to do like a traffic impact site for MDOT because it is a larger, a larger amount of traffic. There are some concerns that they have with turning movements, both turning left in and turning left out, given the intersection. But that's something that I, I guess, we could talk about that more. I, I addressed that later in my report, I believe. But as, as a matter of complying with all those permits, that would be something that would be addressed as a condition of approval.
They, they would have to do it as a condition of approval anyway.
Yep.
With that in mind, the sixth standard for review standards, again, all in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
And a poll the same time? Thank you. Now, I'd like to, as it is a public hearing, if there are any comments specifically on the special land use review standards that we just went through, if there is any questions or concerns, we would welcome them. Please state your name and address, I think.
So my name is Ken Burke, and I live on 1570 Hawthorne Hills. I'm a resident of this town. My kids go to the school here in, in Lowell, and I also own the McDonald's in Lowell. My dad actually opened it in 1984. I have looked over the proposed plan, and I do have some concerns, that they're going to be a neighbor of mine, possibly. But I also wanted to make myself available for any questions that you have, as an owner of a McDonald's restaurant with a drive-through already in this town. I remember when the Burger King was in this town on a much larger site, with a larger drive-through, a dedicated entrance and a dedicated exit on M21. I also remember them leaving. To me, it doesn't make much sense with how this town has grown, and so much that they have picked out a smaller location with only one entrance and exit on M21. Recently, I locate, relocated the McDonald's in Ada. I work with a planning commission in Ada to review traffic patterns, site plan, and safety. I understand a planning commission has to consider plans for development, and what effects those will take for today and the future. Looking at the site plan, the biggest concern I have is for the safety and entrance and exit on M21. My restaurant is a life business, like the proposed Burger King, and we have a dedicated entrance and a dedicated exit just on M21 alone. If we just take a moment and imagine my restaurant, picking it up, turning it sideways, and putting it in that site that close to M21, and thinking what would happen? Just on Friday alone, I had 180 vehicles visit us in one hour. It would be chaos if we had one entrance and exit on M21. And I am concerned that this project is developed, it will create a traffic nightmare. Accidents will occur, people, when they're trying to turn into Burger King, McDonald's, or even just trying to turn left at the light. Another concern I have is that the business is drawn out with little concern of stacking the drive-through. Site plan shows seven cars stacked in the drive-through, and it is nowhere near enough when they get stacked farther into the parking lot and onto M21. In 2012, Burger King left Lowell. My restaurant had only one drive-through, only one drive-through lane, and our customers were backed up onto M21 at times almost to the light. I invested thousands into adding an additional drive-through just to get the customers off the road. So as I look at Burger King's plan, and as it gets busy and backed up, you'll have people parking and walking through their drive-through traffic just to come to their restaurant. That is also one thing. Building the restaurant further away from the road allows for more drive-through cars to be stacked, because my drive-through can stack over 30 cars, and that's still having them backed up on that M21. If cars do get backed up because of the Burger King, a lot of people are going to be mad, and my business will be impacted. So when that happens, who do I call? What do I say? What does this restaurant and traffic look like when McDonald's is closed, when I renovate and redo my entire restaurant and lobby? What would it look like if I moved? What does it look like 20 years from now? Lastly, I shared with you the site plan, I shared the site plan with McDonald's Real Estate and Development. They are experts in this. They had the same concerns as well as others. They said the team, they said that their team would expect at least a mandatory right turn only on M21, and that they said it was such a poorly thought-out plan in their opinion that they wouldn't even bring it to the planning commission. So maybe tonight we don't need to rush, rush to judgment. Take a few moments, and you can visit my restaurant on Friday or Saturday. I want to take a few minutes to see what I'm talking about. These concerns have been brought up and weigh on the citizens of Lowell and the businesses that have actually stayed in this town and never left. I appreciate your time tonight as you make the right decisions for this great town of Lowell.
Thank you, Ken, right?
Yeah.
Thank you, Ken. Anybody else? Let's then go on to the site design standards for restaurants with drive-through facilities. And I think that, that the entire issue of the M21 comes in, I think it comes in in this part here.
So in addition to general, so you wanted to go to the specific standards for restaurants?
Let's go through the site design standards for restaurants.
Okay. So in addition to the general standards that, that we went through for all special land uses, many if not all special land uses in, that are listed in the zoning ordinance also come with a bunch of, of additional regulations that we also have to look at individually. So the 17.04 subsection T, which starts on the bottom of page four of my report, kind of walks through each one of those standards. So the first standard states that sufficient stacking capacity for the drive-through
So the first standard states that sufficient stacking capacity for the drive-through shall be provided to ensure that traffic does not extend into the public street right-of-way, minimum, a minimum of ten stacking spaces, but service ordering stations shall be provided. Stacking spaces shall be located so as not to interfere with vehicular circulation and ingress, egress from the property by vehicles not using the drive-through. So the site plan shows basically room for seven vehicles, that they kind of wrap around the west and south side of Burger King restaurant. It requires ten stacking spaces so that it not, so that it doesn't extend into, to the right-of-way. You could fit three more in addition to their seven without it extending out into the road. However, when, when you do that, you obviously would be blocking some of the on-street, or on-streets, some of the, the parking spaces that are between the building and Main Street. You'd probably fit another seven before you start clogging up the, that driveway there onto M, M twenty-one. So I get the concern that Mr. Berg noted that, I mean, yeah, if, if there's thirty cars there, then yeah, that it could be an issue, I suppose. I don't know typically how many a Burger King sees, if it's comparable to McDonald's or not. The ordinance says ten. You can basically fit ten without backing up into the street, so our opinion was that that item was set.
You may get a part of it to, maybe have to go from seven to ten, then?
Yeah, I mean, all, so all they would do if we just said ten is, I mean, they would just basically show three, didn't, like, the plan shows the little rectangles where the cars would be, they would just show those on there. If there are ten, as long as you're comfortable with the fact that, if people could, if they have dining customers that parked over here, then it would, they might automatically have to kind of, you know, leave clean cars that are waiting in the drive-through. It's possible, if you're comfortable with that, I don't know, but it's just something that...
Is there, and I think we're gonna, Rick, could you come up, please? I'd like to know if, if there's a possibility of having two lanes to drive through this area.
That's a good question, and we actually looked at it, because we do try to, where possible, put double drive-through in, and this site with the configuration, it just doesn't allow for this, with the two lanes. So we, we've looked at it, we've explored that, and this is the best layout, and it will work on the site, given the space we've got.
Is that like a little nook there, where the circular number five is where the dumpster stands?
Yeah.
Is there a physical barrier between Burger King and the park?
Of the green space, I would assume.
I mean, so there's some flexibility there.
Talking about the west side of this, of the building?
The south, south, south end. If there was any flexibility, if it came about in the future, like the McDonald's owner, you know, if he decided that he needed to double up somehow to solve your traffic issue?
Those, those spaces over there, I believe you're talking about due south of the building.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the place to put the double drive-through would be at the ordering, which that is actually closer to the pickup.
Are those other, those additional ones there that Colin was just talking about, are those the ones for, after you've ordered, can you pull over?
No, those are, the ones, the hot and fresh spaces are, is if you would drive through the drive-through at the pickup lane, hey, your order's not quite ready yet, you would drive almost straight forward.
Yeah, it's only have to, to have you pull ahead, that's all.
Yeah, I got it, I got it. I didn't see that before. Commissioners, any other questions? Thanks, Rick, right now. Any other questions? All in favor, then, of the site standard, site design standard, section seventeen oh four T, number one, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. And that would be part of the condition, is that they would add in the R three, so as we stated, that would be part of that, that one.
Item number two, it's on page five now, in addition to parking space requirements, at least three spaces shall be provided in close proximity to the exit of the drive-through portion of the operation for all customers waiting for delivery orders. So we just talked about, they show the three quote-unquote hot and fresh spaces near the exit, so I think that standard would be satisfying.
Again, any questions, commissioners? If not, all in favor of the site design standard number two, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Number three?
Item three, public access of the site shall be located at least fifty feet from any intersection as measured from the nearest right-of-way line to the nearest edge of the set access. They do meet that standard. Both of those driveways are fifty feet from the intersection of Main Street and Valley Vista.
Any questions, commissioners? All in favor of meeting the public restroom, site design standard number three, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Number four?
As the parking and moving areas of the site shall be fenced and screened from view of any abiding residential district or use by a particular fence or wall or a fenced P E equivalent. This is an easy one, as there are no abiding residential properties.
So do we need to act on that at all?
I don't think it applies, or somebody, they probably skip it. The fifth standard says outdoor speakers for the drive-through facility shall be located in a way that minimizes sound transmission toward neighboring property and uses. The outdoor speakers are about thirty-five feet off of the west property line for ordering, so it does allow for sound, it's directed towards Valley Vista Drive. Also worth noting on the landscaping plan is they have a row of evergreens, like Arvita or something, that would help minimize that, that transmission significantly.
Any questions, commissioners? Then the site design standard for restaurants, number five, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Section eight, and before we go to section eight, again, any public comments? And Ken will note, will note your, your comments with this, so.
Let's go to the next site plan review standard.
So in addition to the special land use standards, we have just, now, these are the site plan standards that you guys have been through many times with different applications. So this is looking at less the use and more the overall design of the site. The first one says, this is proposing a lot adversely affect the public health, safety, welfare. These is infrastructure located on the site shall be planned to take into account the property size of the property, the uses on adjoining property, and the relationship in size of buildings to the site. Shall be developed so as not to impede the normal and orderly development or improvement of surrounding property for use permitted in this ordinance. Yeah, my thoughts are, given, given the site that it's, that it's empty, it's been vacant for a while, I forget what was there before, but, but the building came down, it's been a vacant property for years now. You have this in, it, this in and of itself, I don't think it impedes the normal and orderly development or improvement of the surrounding properties for other commercial businesses.
Questions, commissioners? All in favor, then, of the site plan review standard number one, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Number two?
Safe, convenient, I mean congested and well-defined vehicular and pedestrian circulation shall be provided for ingress, egress points and within the site. Drive streets and other circulation routes shall be designed to promote safe and efficient traffic operations within the site and at ingress and egress points. So a couple of things here, and we'll get into the traffic thing, I think, with the next standard, and the entrance on, on Main Street. Site plan shows pretty, you know, pretty clearly and well-defined rights of way and areas for vehicles to drive in between the parking spaces. The sidewalks are, are going to be preserved or improved, he's got the connection from sidewalk to the front end of Main Street. Two proposed ingress and egress points already existed on the site. There are some concerns we have with that Main Street driveway, which we'll get to in a sec. And the last one, we already talked about that a bit, but that, that row of fifteen spaces on the south side, that's basically right, right in front of Curtis Cleaners. It's, that's not a, a huge concern, but I can see just because there's nothing that's gonna indicate to anybody where one property line starts and the other one ends, so it's gonna probably look like it's Curtis Cleaners property, and so that's what I was thinking that. Some kind of cross-access easement or something would be incorporated in allocation.
And again, the city attorney would draw up that easement, is that the...
Yeah, well, we wait. Typically, I think what we do is we have the applicant actually come up with something, but the city attorney would look at it and approve it. You don't typically get to the problem of writing...
And because it is an easement right now, Curtis Cleaners has the easement rights.
Yeah, I mean, so...
They would have to agree to whatever happens.
Both of property owners would have to agree, I guess. Actually, with the, with the existing easement, I believe you also would need to sign off on that.
We do?
Yes, which would be separate from this conversation. So that would be, because that would be an amendment to the Curtis Cleaners, who plan not Burger King.
Yeah, we will afterwards, here. Yeah, and I, I, I will take comments here, and, and because these are different review standards here, if you have a comment, let's, let's hear it, because this is a question here with the Curtis Cleaners.
Yeah, John Curtis, I mean, I'm Curtis, I mean...
Good.
That, that design was basically...
John, please come up here so we can get you on tape.
I don't have TV.
No, on tape.
That, that design's basically done that way. We are gonna have cross-easement agreement for parking. We haven't done it yet, because we wanna go through this process first, see where we're at, but that's basically what the, the parking is there for, is for...
In, in order.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Even though I've got adequate parking, they've got adequate parking, I'm adding the parking lot in the back, that's pretty much for employees.
Right.
I still need that, I call it overfloor parking, for my customers.
Right.
So that's, you know, whether it's gonna be on the side or right there, or open, we haven't done it yet. We're gonna have that agreement between us.
Yeah.
Okay, well, it needs to be approved by the city attorney, that's, that's fine.
Yeah.
But that's all part of the process, and that's why it's designed that way.
Okay, because it's between you, your, your two properties, I mean...
Yeah, yeah.
In, in essence, but we have to look right at it here and make that...
Right, I'm selling property to them, and if they don't agree with me, well, then...
Correct.
Not gonna be a Burger King there, so...
Correct, okay. Thank you.
All right, you got it.
I appreciate it. Commissioners, any questions, then? Any other public comment on this specific issue? Rick?
Yeah, if you don't mind, and thanks again for letting me have the podium, we are gonna reach out to MDOT. We already have reached out to them, I've gotten Mr. Heen's comments, we are engaging a traffic engineer, they truly are the experts on terms of traffic, they'll model it. The difference with our side is we do have only one access on Main Street, that's actually better, in my opinion, than two, because you're choking yourselves off if we were to have another, we've got a, a separate access off Valley Vista, carrying much less traffic. So we are reaching out to MDOT, or MDOT, excuse me, I'm from Surrey, MDOT, and I believe that would just be a condition of your approval, should you choose to...
Okay, and Rick will come into that in the next one, out of the next standard here, so, we'll bear that in mind.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so having said that, with the, it still becomes a condition in our, in our site plan, you, for the easement.
Yep.
It has to.
Yeah, item seven now, here under my recommendation on the last page, address this, we'll get there.
Having said that, then, for the site plan review standards, number two, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Number three?
And that, number three states, the arrangement of public or private vehicular and pedestrian infections to existing or planned streets in the area shall be planned to provide a safe and efficient circulation system for traffic. Then this would be, well, this is really my only concern with the site. So right now, the entrance, you know, as, as, as you guys know, there's an entrance on Main Street, on the east side of the property, there's an entrance to Valley Vista, on the south side of the property. So on Main Street, given the location of the intersection with, with Valley Vista, just looking at the site, I'm concerned with people who are heading west on Main Street that are turning the left into the site, because they have to kind of stop like a hundred feet short of the light, and then kind of sit in that left turn-only lane that's meant for, so to get the traffic light, and you get, so you gotta stop short, and then try to, and then try to turn into the site. And then similarly, if you are exiting the site, going on to Main Street and you want to turn left to head west on Main Street, you're gonna have that same problem, so you're gonna sit there, depending on how cars are queued up at the light, you might not be able, be even able to get out and turn left there, right? So that's really the, the concern with the intersection, you know, as we've talked about, it is a high-traffic generator, you know, higher than our ordinary deep times, so there are some, some congestion concerns there. I also talked to Carolyn at, Carolyn Keena at MDOT, he said the same thing, he said they might have to make that a right turn only lane on, on Main Street. I think that, not sure what, what the commission's thinking is, I, if you're comfortable with just accepting MDOT's recommendation for that site, whatever they do, and whatever they require to permit, or would you want to require that now and say you shall only be right turn on to Main Street or something like that? Or you're right in and right out only? I don't know.
Commissioners?
I think we should go with MDOT. I mean, they are the experts on traffic flow, turning.
Can we overrule them after they make the decision? Just throw them down.
Well, I think, I think the, I think the, I mean, I, Main Street making a left turn into Burger King, while difficult, is totally legal, and you're coming from a public roadway. On the other hand, making a left turn coming out of the Burger King on the Main Street will be like the Donalds is right now.
It's bad.
Darn near impossible. I would recommend, I would make a strong recommendation, in fact, that we make a right turn only exiting Burger King. I have no, no problems with the Main Street, that's, that's a public thoroughfare, and you can turn left or not turn left, that's, that's, that's your problem. And making some kind of recommendation that they go to the Valley Vista and come in that entrance would make some sense, on Burger King's part, I would think. But having said that, I, I would make a strong recommendation that we recommend that they turn right exiting Burger King.
On Main.
On Main, correct.
You could have signage, too. You could put signage, okay, if you're Westbound Main, Main Street, use Valley Vista as your exit.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
Well, when you do that, you're also affecting Curtis Cleaners at the same time.
But they will have their main entrance off of Valley Vista, so, and again, I, I would make the same recommendation for that driveway, and it's the same, same situation there. I, frankly, I, turning left out of McDonald's is, is bad enough right now.